It's a virtual meeting, it'll be shown on YouTube and it'll be run tomorrow on local channel 16. Suzanne, roll call please.
Councilor Bosco.
Here.
Councilor Cicale.
Hey Bill.
Is she here? Councilor Hemler.
Here.
Councilor Kiner. Mayor Ludwig.
Here.
Councilor Mangini.
Here.
Councilor Mueller.
Here.
Councilor Riley.
Here.
Councilor Sforazo.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Here.
Councilor Ungire.
Lori has a dentist appointment, she'll be joining us later.
There's eight members.
Bill, Bill's having difficulty getting on.
Alright, I'll try to call him.
Okay, he's, he's gonna work on it.
Are, are we okay, uh, do you have to move into exec session or you want to wait for Bill?
I'd move and he can, we can get into it and then...
Give him a couple minutes. Okay.
Do I have a motion to move into exec session?
So moved.
Second, Councilor Sforazo. Say if I, Councilor Mueller was in favor of moving to exec, exec session, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. ATV is at all?
Thank you, sir. Item three, new business discussion resolution, resolution to proceed the final design referendum of the Connecticut River Access Project. So council mother, second by council man Gini. So I, Chris or Nelson?
Yeah, I'll just give the the preface on the money part and it's going to be two prong. Nelson's going to give a quick overview of what the project is. The town attorney can answer questions about, and the reason we pushed this was to find out our obligation to pay back. This basically is a federal earmark dating back to 2009 in the amount of $3 million, $95,000 and change for this Connecticut River Access Project. It required a 20% tile match, which is approximately $773,000 of the total project cost of estimated 3.8 million. Under the rules, these things have to, they have a 10 year timeframe for the preliminary design. We're at that the state is pushing us, they need to know by September 1st if we're going to proceed. And with that, we have sent some diagrams and maps to the council in your packet so that you can be familiar with it. Nelson's going to give a thumbnail sketch of what it is. And then the town attorney can give us a brief opinion and he gave, he gave us a written opinion and he was going to be in a position tonight to answer questions, just give a quick overview of what we would owe and when we would owe it under the different scenario. So with that, Nelson?
Sure.
No, name and title, name and title, please.
Sure, Nelson Terezal, Deputy Director of Economic and Community Development, Town of Enfield. To expand on what Chris said, the purpose of this earmark is to provide, to provide high speed rail crossing for, for biking, pedestrian trails. The original earmark was actually dated back to 2005. It was for the Route 190 Bridge just south of that area for a fishing pier. That was denied by the town council in 2009. The town worked with the FHWA on a new plan. And in 2016, we proceeded with the preliminary design for this Connecticut River Access Project. As you can see on page four of the agenda tonight, provides a brief preliminary design of what the project area is. Now, the project starts at the intersection of North Main Pearl and Main Street where there's a passive recreational area with benches, a sitting area, and it extends along westerly along Main Street on the southern end of Main Street across the community garden. It's going to be a streetscape type of project with a multi path for bike and pedestrian traffic. There's going to be beautification involved. And then the path continues along just north of freshwater Brook. And then you hit your second passive recreation area. Once you approach this proposed, proposed steel trust prefabricated pedestrian bridge, which is going to go over freshwater Brook onto Asnuntuck Street, where it goes under the underpass of the Amtrak Rail Line. And that becomes a pedestrian only access where it connects to the South Rivers Road, where it goes north along the newly constructed South River Street Bridge and heads back onto Main Street where you head west to the final passive recreation area, which is going to be pedestrian overlook at the location of where Main Street meets the Connecticut River. There'll be parking there. The, the intent of the, the repurposing of the funds was to accommodate and go along with the proposed transit center at the, at 33 North River Street. So right now we have completed preliminary design in all of the environmental permitting. The state has, has informed us that we need to make a decision by September 1st, 2020. They gave us a six month extension due to COVID-19. We need to make a decision on whether or not we want to proceed to final design. What that means is we are committing to constructing the project. And from FHWA standpoint is we're all in where if we do decide after we commit to going into final design, that we do not proceed with construction, we are liable to pay back the federal match on this project, which is 80% of the cost expended to date. Currently, we've expended a total of about $250,000 worth of cost to date. About 50,000 of that has been the towns. So that's where we're at. So if we do proceed and we move into final design, we are liable to pay back everything that we've expended today, including the federal funds. If we do not proceed and passes resolution tonight, we do not owe the feds any more money and we just lose out on the grant dollars and the $50,000 that we spent today.
And perhaps Mike, and that was a very good synopsis, I thank you. Because it's kind of, it's not too complicated, but it is with the historical perspective and it's sort of a bifurcated project. So that was a very fine presentation. And perhaps before we open up the questions, Mayor, the town attorney could just weigh in on the payback. I think actually Nelson did do a good job addressing it, but would you like to add anything Attorney Talberg?
Sure, Mr. Town Manager, for the record, Jim Talberg, Town Attorney. The Town Attorney's Office has been involved in this project for some period of time. There's an original 27 page master municipal agreement for design projects that we had approved four years ago and recently issued a revised opinion because we're coming up with this debt, coming, coming upon this deadline. And there in fact is a provision 16.5, which states that if the project is not completed, the municipality shall reimburse the DOT for all state and federal funding that was dispersed to the municipality. So Nelson has outlined quite neatly, I think, the options that if you approve this resolution and then you don't obtain final approval from the electorate via referendum for the additional funding you would need. And that would entail also acquisition of properties and a variety of other steps. If you continue down this path and don't obtain that referendum approval and don't complete the project, that's when the town would be on the hook for what could be as much as at least an additional 200 in excess of 200,000 above the 50 that's already been spent. And so that's the real, I mean, it's a policy decision for you on the council, but we just want to make sure that you have your eyes wide open as to the implications that if you were to stop now and not proceed further, my understanding is you'd lose what you have into this project. But if you proceed further and don't get it over the finish line and incur these additional costs, you'd have to pay money back to the state and federal government. Happy to answer any questions, the precise numbers and details Nelson is more familiar with, but that's the big overview for you all to consider. Mr. Mayor, you're muted.
Thank you, I've been talking and I'm muted, sorry about that. Chris, anything else before we open up the questions?
No, I just think it, in this uncertain time, it's difficult to know. Not only, as we've said, you're, you're going to have to pay back the state and federal grant portions and also whatever we've expended to that point will be gone. I mean, at this point it's 50,000, so we, we have no obligation for repayment. But as we proceed, there's going to be that joint, you know, our, our money that's going to be spent and expended, plus the state and the federal money of federal government. And if at any point when it goes to referendum and isn't approved, then, you know, our money isn't coming back that we spent our share. And certainly then you have that exposure to repay the state and federal governments. I, I've had a difficult time with this project, making a decision on how I would recommend or make a recommendation. I've, I work with Kasha and Nelson. I don't know, it just seems to me there's so many moving parts, there's so many variables, there's so many unknowns. I'm not going to take a position, I'm not comfortable with it. I, I think it would be wonderful if it worked, but I, I just think it's, I don't know, you know, you know, steel bridges and underpasses and then going to a dead end of an overlook to look out at the, I, I don't know, it just doesn't grab me. It seems that it's too fractured and it just doesn't, I, I don't know, I, I just, it never grabbed me like a lot of the other things we're doing. I can understand Higgins Park, I understand, you know, retrofitting and enhancing improvements at the Lafayette Park. I understand a platform, I understand freshwater pond and putting, you know, paddle boats there. I understand the boat launch and maybe having an eagle lookout. I understand the South River Street Bridge. I really don't understand this and I've tried, I just for some reason, I just, I, I don't have a, a great feeling that I would make a strong recommendation, so I leave it to the council. I know that some of you have had more familiarity with it. It just seems a little too convoluted to me, but with that, I leave it to you, we'll follow your direction as however you wish to proceed.
All right, thank you guys, moving over to Councils for Raza.
Well, you know, Mike, when this project was first proposed back in 09, I thought it was really obnoxious, crazy to spend $3 million to do a, a bridge for fishermen. And, and as we modified it, it sounded better. But I got to be honest with you, if this has to go to referendum, and I guess it does, I'm not prepared to ask the people of Enfield to approve another referendum for a bike path, especially when I just keep reading every day about the layoffs and, and this COVID thing. I hate to keep playing that record over and over, but I don't think anybody here can actually tell us not just when it ends, but when it ends economically, you know, just because there's a vaccine, doesn't mean we're back to normal, people have to feel comfortable. And if that takes six months or a year and we know that we have leaking roofs and, and roads that need to be done, how many times are we going to ask people to approve things? So I'm not going to support this for that reason.
Okay, thank you. Council Riley.
Okay, well, I personally, I'm not a big fan of the whole design of the plan anyways, because we already have a sidewalk that walks right past the bait shop and down to the boat launch anyways. So why just walk down the sidewalk and go to the boat launch? They should have put the money and redone the boat launch because everybody goes there. So we probably would have made out better with that if you made the boat launch better. I don't like a path going through the woods in a rougher area of town. I mean, then you have to put the cops out there and foot patrol more than they already are to police that with the bridge. And I don't want to hold the town hostage to all this money if a referendum doesn't pass. And I, I don't know, but me, I don't want to spend the town's money on anything of sort of developing anything right now until we can pay to fix what we have now or sell the buildings that we have now. Because I don't think that's fair to the taxpayers. We've got to take care of what we got. These are like tough times, lean times, more layoffs are coming. I mean, we got to take care of what we got and deal with that and, and not be unhooked for something that might not even pass and then be unhooked for it. So that's, it's a big old no from me.
Thank you, Councilman Gini.
This reminds me of that movie Risky Business. I like to go to the casino and spend 100 bucks here and there, but I am not anywhere near entertaining the idea of spending taxpayers' money, putting some referendum is very risky. I really hesitate and can't think that the taxpayer would support something like this. If, if any project's going to go to referendum, it should be roofs and roads. So I will certainly not be supporting this. And by the way, thank you, Mr. Bronson, for stating it so very eloquently. I'm confused and I can't wrap myself around this project either, either. So thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you, Councilor Kiner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Farazza, this is a red letter day for me, I find myself in agreement with you once more. You know, this project would certainly provide benefits for our residents. I mean, there, there's no doubt about that. I mean, we're looking at benefits like spend fishing, biking, picnicking along the shores of the Connecticut River. You know, under ordinary times, I would have voted for this to go out to referendum. But this is no ordinary time. And again, I agree with Carl, with the pandemic hanging over us, we at this time have no idea really what the costs are going to be. At this point, with so many people unemployed, I'm not sure we have a firm grasp yet on how our tax revenues are even coming in with taxes due for today. And of course, add to that fact that we're spending almost $774,000 and has been stated by so many people up to now that we may have to pay back federal funds expended if the project were to be canceled or not approved during the referendum. There was just too much, too much risk involved. You know, I, I think if we were going to do any referendum, I would much rather be repair for our school roofs and provide for the health and safety of our children. So I'm no vote on this as well, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Okay, so I, I'm probably one of the people who's pushed the most for bike paths. And it's always been my belief that if you have a road, bikers have as much right it's always been my belief that if you have a road, bikers have as much rights on the roads as everybody else does. They take more risk, but they still have the rights. You know, and I look at this and I'll be honest with you, the only thing I like is the pedestrian outlook. I don't like the bike path. I think it's counterproductive to what we strive to do on Post Office Road where we put down the share of the road and people go there on their bike and everybody is respectful of everybody else. So for me, I honestly, I can't support this. I don't feel that it's necessary. So with that being said, I'm a no vote as well.
Thank you, Councilor Mueller.
I'm a no vote as well. And I feel we're going to like lock the future council into something. And that's a big amount, the 774,000. If we don't do it within 10 years, we'll kind of tie their hands for future use. So I'm a no.
Councilor Hamler.
Yeah, I won't be supporting it either. I think we need to cut our losses at this point. And any referendums really should be for roofs and roads. And because it seems like it's too much of a gamble. A lot can, we found out a lot can happen in two months, three months, four months, never mind 10 years. So that's, that's how I'm going to vote.
Thank you, Counselor Bosco.
Well, sort of sad. It was, it's a great project. I wish we would have known about the deadline a year before so we could have at least got it out to the voters. It would have been a beautiful thing down there. But the problem is, we cannot tie the hands of other councils. No matter how nice it is, it's still something that would be nice. It's not something that's necessary like a roof. So I won't be supporting it either. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, Chris, just kind of what you said earlier, I mean, you're right, this is a good project. Even if we don't move forward with it, we're still going to develop in a different fashion. You know, we're not, we're not abandoning trying to find ways of getting people to the river. But I, you know, it's kind of some of your comments earlier, we just may have to do a little pivoting and be a little more creative and do it more on a project by project basis.
It's unfortunate, Mayor. I will just tell you that. I think, I think individuals, as Carl said, the initial earmark for a, for a fish elevator and tower that was not going to benefit many, this was a better option. And I think staff at the time worked hard with the federal government and the state. And it's not easy. We, I had Nelson try to go back. I mean, it's really just sad that they just can't say, because it's supposed to be related to rail. We asked and Nelson extended to say, can't we use this for the platform? Can't we use it to do something constructive for rail? And we were rebuffed. So it's just unfortunate that we have this earmark that we could use for something that would really be for economic development and really stimulate that area. And also, I agree with Donna, the overlook down there, I mean, that's something that would be incredible. It could be part of the TOD. But they are very rigid and stringent in the requirements. I think they feel 10 years has gone by and that they, they're not going to entertain any of those considerations. So I do want you to know that. I think staff in the past tried hard to not lose the money. We reached out as well, but it's just one of those things. So I think the council's making a good decision here.
I wanted to make sure it was clear that we weren't, we tried multiple different angles here, and we still will. It may not just be this specific earmark.
Correct.
Yeah. Thank you. Nelson, anything else or want to make sure?
Nope, nothing else.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Suzanne, roll call please.
Counselor Bosco.
Against.
Counselor Hamler.
Against.
Counselor Kiner.
No.
Again, Mayor Ludwig.
Against.
Counselor Mangini.
Against.
Counselor Mueller.
Against.
Counselor Riley.
Against.
Counselors Frazza.
No.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Against.
There is no one in favor, none against and no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Moving on to item four, item for discussion, discussion resolution, transfer of funds for replacement generator at Town Hall of $100,000. Sorry. Resolved in accordance to Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made. Public Works building grounds from machinery of 100,000 from unallocated charge contingency of 100,000 certified that the above mentioned funds are available on July 23, 2020 by Director of Finance John Wilcox and approved by our Town Manager Christopher Bronson.
So moved.
By Counselor Mueller, second by Counselor Mangini. So Chris, I know there's a nice little write-up before, but just in case you want to highlight anything.
Yes, and Donald's on to elaborate with any question. But basically in Town Hall, there's a generator that dates back to 1970. It failed. It supports the elevator lighting and other electrical services in Town Hall. We had to rent a temporary generator. It's costing approximately $4,000, $4,500 a month. This proposal would, A, buy a new generator that will be for Town Hall that will run on natural gas. And so therefore it will be much cleaner. We've had complaints about exhaust. So this will be natural, natural gas versus diesel. Two, it envisions buying the, at a reduced cost, the good cost that Donald worked out with the company for the generator that is there. And then it will pay the monthly rental of the $4,500 a month for the last few months. That's the $100,000. Donald's thinking and John Wilcox is, well, it would be good to have that generator for other buildings so that if we do have failure somewhere else, we do have a lot of older generators that we would not have to go out and lease one for $4,500 a month. I mean, over four months, we could have bought it. So we're, that's the recommendation of Donald he's on if you have any questions for him.
Thank you, Chris. Donald, just want to make sure, do you have anything you'd like to say since you're on?
No, we're going to be, we're going to use the existing location inside the garage. So when you, when you pull into the back of Town Hall, the garage bay to the right, this generator that was specified will fit in that location. We won't have to make any alterations to that. So that's a good thing. And I said, we're going to be using natural gas. We got, it's just one less thing we have to use for, for diesel and it's one less tank we have to fill and whatever. So we always have perpetual supply of that. So everything should be working out well. It does support, like Chris said, the elevator, all the plug load, and it will be able to support the air conditioner as well, the new one that's going in. So that's why we want to go that route right now.
Thank you. Open up the questions, Council Sprazza.
No questions.
Council Riley.
So if I heard you correctly, the generator can be moved to other buildings if it needed it? Is that how I understand it to be? Or no?
The generator that's there now as the temporary, we'd be able to use that one and bring it to other locations as we need it. That'll supply, that generator's powerful enough for about 70% of all the, all the buildings in towns, you know, things that we have in town. What it won't do is obviously like WPC, they have their own and just a couple pump stations, but they have a larger one than that. So we, again, it would handle pretty much a lot of the whole load for the town.
Okay. All right. Cool. That's all I need. Thanks.
Counselor Mangini.
I'm good.
Counselor Kiner.
No questions. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
All set. Thank you.
Counselor Mueller.
I had a quick question. Is there still an underground storage tank there for the old generator?
No.
No? Okay.
No.
Thank you.
Counselor Hamler.
No questions. Thanks.
Counselor Bosco.
All set.
All right, Chris or Donald, anything else?
No, sir.
No, Mr. Mayor, I'm good.
Thank you, Donald. Suzanne, roll call please.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Hamler.
Four.
Counselor Kiner.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselors Frazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
It's nine in favor, none against and no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Moving on to item B, under items for discussion, request of transfer of funds for lease of 800 Enfield Street of $31,500. Resolved in accordance to Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfers hereby made. To Public Works building grounds from rental land buildings of $31,500, from unallocated charges contingency of $31,000, certified that the above funds are available as of July 23, 2020 by John Wilcox, the Director of Finance, and approved by our Town Manager, Chris Bronson. But so moved by Counsel Mangini, second by Counsel Mueller. Pretty straightforward, Chris. I don't know if you, I mean, I don't know if you have anything else?
No.
Okay. Moving on, Counselors Frazza.
Yeah, I'm good, Mike.
Counsel Riley.
I'm all set. Thanks.
Counsel Mangini.
All set. Thank you.
Counselor Kiner.
No questions. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
All set. Thanks.
Counsel Mueller.
All set. Thank you.
Counselor Hamler.
All set.
Counselor Bosco.
All set.
You know, Chris, just a quick comment. At some point, I mean, I know, I mean, I don't want to, I think we can consider the opening a success maybe at some point, maybe in a fall where you just kind of give a overview of, you know, kind of the positive reviews we've gotten.
Certainly. It really was a tremendous success the first day. I think we had over 500 individuals utilize it to pay taxes and I think 140 dog licenses alone. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback, especially from some of our senior citizens to just say how thankful they were. Some had physical, you know, disabilities that made it difficult to get out and they still like to pay in person. So they were very thankful. We had individual call last week in his 80s to thank us for it. We are now moving into the next phase where we will be opening up the drive-through for many other and varied services to our residents. So I think that that will be very appropriate. Again, we mustn't lose sight of the fact that we are also are currently looking at plans with Public Works to, as Counsel Riley said earlier, to get rid of buildings such as La Mania. We have plans that we're going to have to move recreation and youth out of there. So we can market that property with the strand and hopefully put in some very good housing there to revitalize Thompsonville. And I'll put her on the spot because she was one of the spirits that went out there each and every day and manned the fort. Suzanne, would you like to just say something since you were there on the front line? She's just recently, this week, stopped with the dog licenses because the big push is over. But Suzanne, on the spot, would you like to add anything about what you witnessed over there?
It really was a very nice experience and to have brought it together so quickly. I can't get over how fast Public Works made it work, how your office made it work. But you're right, the people were very happy to be able to drive up, just take care of their business and then leave. It was hot. It was miserable all that time and they didn't have to get out of their cars and walk in or whatever. I think everyone was pretty happy with it.
Thank you, Suzanne. As I said, I think it was very innovative. It shows that government can be very responsive to changing times and can do things in a quick manner when you have good staff and you have a council that is willing to entertain these things and to fund them. So I think a lot of the credit goes to all of you 11 for seeing the vision and supporting it. So we thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I know for the record, Council Angier just joined. Do you have any questions?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Suzanne, thank you. Roll call please.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Hamler.
Four.
Counselor Kiner.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini. Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselors Frazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Counselor Angier.
Four.
Is 10 in favor, none against and no abstentions.
Well, we got the item C under items for discussion, request, discussion resolution, request transfer of funds for Henry Barnard Roof Base 3 of 301,340. Resolved in accordance to Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfers hereby made. From the general fund revenue appropriation fund balance of $88,263 to the general fund allocated transfers of $88,263, from revenue grant projects of $213,077 and $88,263 from the general fund for a total of 301,340 to the grant Barnard Roof Construction Services. Certified the above funds are available as July 24, 2020 by our Director of Finance, John Wilcox, and approved by our Town Manager, Chris Bronson. So moved by Counsel Mueller, second by Counsel Mangini. Okay, Chris, or John, maybe John's on?
Well, I think the real subject matter expert is Donna. And I don't know that John is on and Donald.
I might share it with Donald.
You make sure, I figure the two, the Donald and the Donna, I think can cover it.
This is the, this is the final phase of the original building. This does not include the, the additions. So all the older parts of the roof will be done. And this also includes the repointing of the chimney and the repairs to the chimney that need to be done. And that would include an extension of the, the stack sleeve so that moisture does not do what it's been doing to the chimney. Do I have everything covered, Donald?
You certainly do.
And we're very happy. This will go out to the state bidder. So it looks like it's probably a two-week job according to Chris Seikley. I don't know if he's really optimistic or he's going to get out there with a big stick, but we're hoping to have this done before school starts.
Great news. Counselors Frazza, any questions?
No questions.
Counsel Riley.
Nope, can't wait for it to be done.
Counsel Mangini.
I will support this. However, I really would have liked to have seen a roof referendum. And I guess that's not going to happen. But, you know, I'm not in favor of the piecemeal projects. But again, we have to do these roofs. So, you know, it is what it is. Thank you.
Counselor Kiner.
No questions.
Deputy Mayor Suzak, anything further?
Nope, I'll support this. And we will have Jeff, when he comes back, he's going to do a full presentation on a five to seven-year plan and then a plan for how we take care of our roofs in the future. So we don't get into this problem. So we'll all look forward to Jeff's presentation and how do we do this and not get into repair problems.
Thank you. Counsel Mueller.
No questions. Thank you.
Counsel Angier.
No questions. Thank you.
Counsel Hamler.
No questions.
Counsel Bosco. You know, Donna, just real quick, I mean, just could you remind people how, how the funding's coming in through the state again? I mean, just to remind people that again, this is, I don't use word creative, but a creative way of funding some of these projects as we're getting them done.
Okay, well, the roofs by, just by virtue of the fact that schools are under the state jurisdiction, that roof replacements get a 70% reimbursement by grant, and that's based on our demographics. And when we do windows, that will, that's also a grant that's, that's entitled to the municipalities. And that one is that the state purchases the windows and pays for the cost and we do the installation. We have looked in the past for possible security for our vestibules and our front doors. And there hasn't been anything available, but we continue to look. But our school roofs are our most problematic for having, getting them done because of their size. They're over our referendum limit. All, I think the only town roof that's over the referendum limit is of course now the annex and the Jablonsky. But everything else is, you know, within our referendum limits. But I, I, you know, I look forward to when Jeff comes because he has a blended plan to show you how you do school roofs and town roofs together.
Thank you very much for all your work on this. I know you put a ton of work on it.
Yeah, I'm tired of leaky roofs.
Hearing that, roll call please, Suzanne.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Hamler.
Four.
Counselor Kiner.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselors Frazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Counselor Angier.
Four.
There's 10 in favor, none against and no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Moving on to item D, under items for discussion, resolution authorized in the Town Manager to execute a net DMR signatory with the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection and to designate the and to designate the Superintendent of Water Pollution Control as the authorized subscriber. Whereas the town is required to submit a regular complaint, submit regular required, prior reports for the Water Pollution Control Facility to Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, also known as DEEP. And whereas the DEEP has established the net DMR system to facilitate electronic filing of such compliance records, whereas the use of the system requires the Town Manager to complete a signatory authorization form, designate a subscriber to submit electronically signed reports. Now therefore be resolved, the Enfield Town Council authorized Town Manager to sign the DEEP signatory authorization form and to designate Water Pollution Control Facility Superintendent Todd Mathiason as the authorized subscriber submitted by the Department of Public Works on July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty.
So moved.
Second, Councilor Mangini, second by Councilor Mueller. You know, Chris, pretty straightforward. You're just basically allowing someone to have such signature authority, uh.
Correct. We only had one previous employee who has left our employ that was authorized. These will be done electronically monthly. Our new Superintendent of Water Pollution Control, Todd Mathiason, is the one I will designate. And just as an aside, he has started, and in a short period of time, he has impressed everybody with his, uh, intell- well, his intelligence, his professionalism, and his knowledge. And everybody's very, very happy with his, uh, with his, uh, work so far. And Donald, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I gotta echo that, Chris. He's just been fantastic and we're, we're, we're nearing the, we're nearing the end of the, uh, reconstruction, but you know, everything's kinda coming together and pushing and pushing and, you know, it, it's been some challenging times. He's really risen, uh, he's really risen, and it's been, uh, it's been a pleasure working with him, so. Uh, again, like Chris said, the DMRs are daily monitoring reports that are done electronically now, and that's just how things are done. Before, it was all done by paper, and it's just not, that just, it just changed, kinda changed everything, so. That's all it is, uh, it really isn't much more to that.
No, I, you, you, those little things about signature authority are actually pretty important when you're in a rush on time, so this is actually, uh, very understandable.
Yep.
Thank you. Uh, I'm not gonna go around, is there anyone have any question, questions? This seems pretty straightforward. Does anyone have any questions? Anyone have any questions going once? Going twice? Thank you, everyone. Suzanne, roll call, please.
Bosco.
Four.
Councilor Hemler.
Four.
Councilor Kiner.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Mueller.
Four.
Councilor Riley.
Four.
Councilors Faraza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Councilor Ungar.
Four.
There's ten in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Moving to item E. Discussion Resolution, Resolution authorizing the Town Manager to submit a grant application and to enter an agreement with Preservation Connecticut for Hazville Institute parking plan. Resolve that Christopher W. Bronson, Town Manager, is empowered to execute, deliver, and to name on behalf of the municipality, of this municipality, an application for a targeted grant fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one in a contract with the Preservation Connecticut for a vibrant community initiative grant subject to review and approval by our Town Attorney, submitted by Nelson Toracio, Officer of Community Development on July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Councilor Mueller, second by Councilor Mangini. Chris, any comments? Uh, again, somewhat straightforward, but I'll refer to you.
Well, i- 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 it is. There's been a lot of work done, uh, previously on this.
First of all, I'm gonna recuse myself, everyone, because I am the director of butter.
Okay. For the record, thank you.
There has been work done previously, but parking is obviously a challenge there. Um, and I would just like to commend Nelson on his vigilance and resourcefulness. He's a one-man wrecking crew when it comes to ferreting out grants and opportunities, uh, for the various, for the town, for our nonprofits, and of course, we do own this building, uh, so I commend him, and he could give you just a little thumbnail sketch. It is for fifty thousand dollars. The deadline, uh, to file is August fourteenth. Nelson, would you like to add?
Yes, uh, well, this is a small grant opportunity. Uh, this is, um, Preservation Connecticut, they're a nonprofit, um, they receive state funds from the State Store Preservation Office through the Community Investment Act. This is for an historic community action plan, so this is not a grant opportunity to do any capital improvements to the Hazville Institute. Uh, the building itself, uh, we're moving forward with the final phase, uh, which is electrical, plumbing, HVAC, and ADA compliant bathrooms. We recently received, well, we being the, um, the, uh, Hazardable Institute Conservancy. Uh, the nonprofit received a hundred thousand dollar grant with, from the State's Historic Preservation Office to aid in the final phase of these improvements, and they're proceeding with the town funds to complete this final phase, but the big elephant in the room is parking. Um, ever since I started working here in town, I've asked how we're gonna resolve parking once this building's, uh, operational. And there are two parcels, uh, town parcels in the back, um, that total about half acre that could possibly be utilized, uh, as a parking area to support the Hazardable Institute. Now, this grant needs to take into account all the stakeholders and the abutters on the property. It's, it's more of a community historic plan to bring in the business owners and the project stakeholders to determine what the need is. So we'd have to do a parking assessment. Um, and I'd like to have a final design for the parking lot, so there would be community involvement. So once that this project would go to planning and zoning for approval, the community would be well aware and the abutting property in order to be well aware that a parking plan was in place and all their comments, concerns were assessed as part of, uh, as part of this plan. So my request is to make a is to make a grant application for up to twenty-five thousand dollars to support this task. There's only fifty thousand dollars in money that ha- that's available through this program. I attended the workshop. There's about ten to fifteen participants who attended the workshop. You know, so I, we did have a call, um, the town had a call with the, uh, Preservation Connecticut regarding our request, and they felt that what our intent meets the intent of the grant, so at this time, I'm asking the Council's approval to proceed with the application.
Thank you, Nelson. Uh, moving on to questions, uh, Councilor Sparazza.
I'm all set.
Councilor Riley.
I'm all set, thanks.
Councilor Mangini.
I'm good, thank you.
Councilor Kiner.
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Uh, Councilor Mueller.
All set, thank you.
Councilor Ungar.
No questions, thank you.
Councilor Hemler.
No questions, thanks.
Councilor Bosco.
Yeah, this is good. Uh, Hazville has the same parking problems as Thompsonville, so we can get them some parking down there, it'd be a good thing.
Thank you, sir. And Nelson, again, great job. Again, this is very timely with the getting the other grant that's hopefully gonna allow the Conservancy to finally finish the, finish the improvements and open at some point, so that this is very timing and goes with the grant that you helped us win about three months ago.
Yes.
So again, thank you. This is a very good timing and much appreciated.
Thank you.
Hearing no other questions. Suzanne, roll call, please.
Councilor Bosco.
Four.
Councilor Hemler.
Four.
Councilor Kiner.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Mueller.
Four.
Councilor Riley.
Four.
Councilors Faraza.
Four.
Councilor Ungar.
Four.
There's nine in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Moving at the item F under items for discussion, discussion resolution, resolution to approve a four-year collective bargaining agreement for the Enfield Police Employees Association. Uh, res- uh, resolved at the end. So Chris, I'm gonna read this, then we're gonna have to make amendment to change it to a four-year.
Okay.
Is that all right? I mean, just to make sure we right, cause it says three, I'll, I'll just, I'm gonna read the resolution as presented, then we have to make a, I'll make a quick amendment. Resolve the Enfield Town Council does hereby approve the three-year collective bargaining agreement between the Enfield, between the Town of Enfield and the Enfield Police Employees Association dated July one, two thousand and eighteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, prepared on July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty by our Director of Human Resource, Steve Belinda.
So moved.
By Councilor Mueller.
Second.
By Councilor Mangini. And so before we get into discussion, um, obviously this is a four-year agreement. And I wanna make sure, then we will, then we'll, we'll have Chris to, uh, you know, comment, and I think the chief is here as well. But I wanna make sure, Chris, the only thing I'm changing is the first where it says three should be four-year collective, right?
Correct. The resolution says, i- in the printed, it says four-year collective, but then down below it says three years. So we'll have to, we'll take Steve to task when he speaks.
And Steve, tho- those dates are correct, right?
That's correct. Yes.
So I make amendment in the first sentence to change the wording of three and the number of three to four. So year collected agreement.
Second.
Second. By Councilor Mangini. Motion made to change the word three and the number three to the w- the num- to the word four and to the number four. So I have a, I made a motion, Councilor Mangini has second. Now, is there any discussion before we get to the main motion on that amendment? Anyone? Anyone? So again, uh, on the amendment only, do I have all those by, in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? So that means Suzanne, we have ten in favor and zero against on the amendment. So now, Chris, we have the, the motion as amended. I'll turn it over to you and Chief Fox.
Thank you. I would, um, just commend the chief and Steve and the union leadership, uh, the President Eric Coran and the union team, uh, for everybody's diligence and good faith and working very hard to arrive at an agreement that is fair to all the parties. I think it just shows when people act professionally, um, and they put personal feelings aside, and they continue to do their jobs even though there might be a, uh, disagreement, that you can arrive at a fair and just settlement because you don't let personalities and loose lips, um, sink the ship. And what I mean by that is, these things can be very frustrating. People's livelihoods are at stake. Uh, the council has to consider the public and, and, you know, the implication of these agreements on future tax rates, so it's easy for someone to lose their cool and to say something that becomes an impediment later to reach an agreement, even though initially, um, you, you weren't able to do so. So both sides were able to do that. I think it's a testament that we did have to enter the collective bargaining process, but that's what it's there for. Brought the parties together. They proceeded to a point where then it became, uh, clear to people that it was in everyone's best interest to reach a compromise that would be fair. So with that, I'll turn it over to Steve, and then, um, we can have comments by the chief, but I commend both of them and Eric Coran and the council for everybody's level-headedness and cool-headedness in being able to, uh, have, uh, have this agreement here this evening for the council's consideration. I think it's in the best interest of the town, and everyone did a very incredible job, and the, and the townspeople should be proud. Steve?
Thank you, Town Manager, and, and I apologize, Mr. Mayor. I think in my excitement and putting this resolution together, I missed that, that second, um, word.
Apology accepted, Steve.
Um, as the folks at home may or may not know, we've been mired in police contract arbitration for approximately almost a year, or we're gonna be coming onto a year, and there, it's important to me that I thank two groups of people and how we got here tonight. One is the police officers themselves. They have not had a raise since July one of two thousand and seventeen. And we went through negotiations, arbitration, and they've been nothing but the consummate professional, and every time we met, uh, no picketing, even though they can't strike legally, they still can picket. There was never any picketing, then never any vote of no confidence, no blue flu callouts, sick outs, uh, COVID outbreak. They rose to the occasion, we called upon them. We had the largest unscheduled march down Elm Street in a generation. They rose to the occasion and they peacefully, um, handled that issue, and, you know, I only just wanna recognize that because here we are, uh, in arbitration, and they handled themselves as professionals as they, they, as much as they could. Um, in sum, they answered the call of duty when it was, uh, called upon them. The second person I, I have to thank is the Town Manager. Uh, about five weeks ago, I'm home flipping burgers on the grill, not thinking about work, and he calls me up and he says, Steve, this arbitration has bothered me. Um, I want you to report to my office tomorrow morning, bring the pencils, let's sharpen them, let's see what we can do. How far apart are we? Because, um, quite frankly, Chris cares about all his people. And this was bothering him, and, and he's mindful of the current events. He, you know, he, he, he thanks the police all the time, but he knows after a while, it's just a living service. He needs to get the actions done, and, um, he called me up, we called, uh, Eric Coran, the police, uh, Union President. How far apart are we? And, and kudos to Eric Coran for not posturing. He knew where we were sincere when we called upon him. How far apart are we? Let's get this thing boiled down, and lo and behold, uh, we were a lot closer once we started talking and not talking through the attorneys and arbitration, and we can maybe pull this off. Um, it all depends on how strong of an argument Chris made to you guys, and I think he, he can make a compelling argument, but, um, it was important, um, by, if we vote favorable tonight, we're gonna save tens and thousands of dollars in legal fees that we don't have to pay that we were earmarked uh, in going forward, and, um, you'll see that we are not that far apart, uh, compared to all the other contracts. We got the zero which we wanted, that was a sticking point. Uh, we got them to agree to a seventeen percent, um, premium posture in the last year of the contract and the wellness program. So now they're in line with every other single police union, I mean, I'm sorry, every other union and non-union employee in town. Um, they initially wanted two pension enhancements, uh, into the negotiation process, and we said that was one of the reasons why we ended up in arbitration, but, um, they withdrew one of them, and then we compromised on the second one, and that they were willing to pay two-thirds of that pension enhancement. So that's, that, that's compromise. We worked together and, um, Chris, to his credit, we renegotiated with another vendor that produced savings to the town, so he was able to find money, and he he always said, if I can find money to help sell this thing, I'm gonna do it. And, and credit to him, he did it. Um, they, we had to tweak some language on operational issues, things that the chief needed, uh, they heard him, uh, and they agreed to it. We did some changes on, uh, retired health insurance, so we changed the language, the formula, but it's still cost neutral today to the town. Um, we had to give a bump up to detectives, sergeants, lieutenants, and even our own attorneys were saying in arbitration, you're gonna lose this one. You guys are so far below. Uh, the whole Hartford County, so, um, and I think you guys already agreed to that earlier, so. Um, there is, uh, oh, and the physical fitness program, we tweaked that, so it's gonna be now more productive. Both parties have buy-in on that. Before, it was a one-sided deal, and, um, Chief, uh, former Chief Sparazza can remember that. It didn't work out the way we had wanted to do. Now we have buy-in by both parties, which will make it more successful. I'm, I'm, I'm proud of this contract because, uh, arbitration always leaves one person embittered on an issue. You got this, we didn't get that, you got this. A collaborative settlement is always the best outcome for both parties. We can, uh, come in the next day, shake hands, say good morning to them, there's no bitterness. And we did that anyway, cause like I said, these guys were professional, and it wa- it was actually very gratifying, uh, coming to this conclusion today because, um, it could've gone south quick, uh, many times, and we didn't. We, we kept together, and I wanna give a shout-out to, uh, Chief Fox and Captain Golden for standing by me as we were in the trenches in arbitration getting cross-examined.
Thank you, sir. I will, on that, I will transition over to Chief Fox if he is joined.
I'll be brief. At the, uh, risk of piling it on, uh, Mr. Belinda, Captain Golden, Officer Coran, and, and in particular, Mr. Bronson, uh, really allowed us to get this to, uh, to you today with at least a preliminary, uh, uh, belief that it would be supported. Uh, this process by definition, if by definition, it causes some, uh, sharp elbows, it causes some some, some licking of wounds when you get to a point where you're actually in the arbitration process, and we get it, that's what we signed up for. Uh, but everyone did maintain their cool, maintain their posture. Uh, the adage that several of us used was that we began and ended every session on a handshake. And I think that's the way you conduct yourself in these matters. At the end of the day, you have a package that offers a fair rate of compensation, a, a fair rate of salary and benefits, and I do think that we got several important language issues uh, that I, that I believe were, uh, appropriate in order to allow us to operate as efficient, efficiently as possible. Uh, I, I certainly support this and appreciate your support thus far.
Thank you, Chief. Chris, before I open up the questions, anything else?
No, I just commend both of them and Eric Coran, the, the union team, and a- as Steve said, all of our officers. You know, it's, it's difficult when you're out there in the trenches and people say you're doing a good job and you've got your back when we're in arbitration, and, and there's sort of that, that, uh, nagging in the back of their mind, well, you really don't. And I think the council does support our police department. It's the finest police department in the state of Connecticut. It's Kalia certified. I think it's just most interesting. We were recertified, which is a, a badge of honor to our department. There's only, I believe, I, and Chief, correct me, fourteen other departments in the state, but it soon to be followed by everybody because now the state of Connecticut in this most recent police, uh, legislation has seen the wisdom of that, and everybody's gonna have to now be Kalia certified. We've, we've been ahead of that curve for twenty-five years, uh, and in part thanks to the leadership of Chief Sparazza when he was in the department. So I couldn't be more proud of everybody, everyone involved, every officer on the line, everyone in the police department, the town council, and, uh, Steve Belinda and the Chief of Police. It just, just, again, I, 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 as Chief Fox, I don't wanna gosh, and I don't wanna, uh, pile on, but it really is a remarkable accomplishment for everybody to have worked this well together under such stress in these most recent times and been able to come out the other end as a team, uh, working together for the residents of Enfield. It is remarkable, and I thank everybody.
Thank you, sir. I'll open up the questions. Uh, Councilor Sparazza.
So first of all, I want to extend, uh, my congratulations to Chief Fox and the members of the Police Department for being re-accredited with their Kalia accreditation. for being re-accredited with their Kalia accreditation. I believe there's nineteen police departments in the state of Connecticut that hold that designation and just a few hundred nationwide. It's no small, uh, task. I know the work that goes into it. They need to be congratulated for that. And like Mr. Bronson said, in light of the, what's been going on in our country, you're going to see a mandate that everyone is gonna have to do what we started back in nineteen ninety-six, so congratulations to them. Um, I certainly wanna congratulate Steve Belinda, um, Eric Coran, and the union for negotiating in good faith. But you know, um, I'm gonna pile on because we were in arbitration, it's very expensive, but our Town Manager saw that there was an equitable way to bring this to a conclusion without paying tens of thousand dollars to attorneys. And Chris was the spark plug, the impetus to get this done. And he got it done at a time when we're gonna be losing police officers, uh, in light of what happened in Connecticut. I honestly believe that, talking to our people, um, some of the, the, the changes in that bill are just, um, deal breakers for a lot of police officers. And let me tell you, the time when we're supposed to back the blue, which we always have, uh, this agreement is not any type of extra. This is just e- equitable. It's fair, it's where they need to be, and I congratulate them on that. And I absolutely support this, and again, I'm happy that we were able to conclude it and not pay the lawyers more and more and more. This is a very fair, uh, settlement, and I congratulate everybody involved, especially, like I said, Chris. And again, a lot, like Mr. Belinda said, um, they do their job, they're, they're, they're professional. And, um, and I have, um, I speak from experience working with these people. They're compassionate, and they're, they're very good human beings. And I, and I'm very happy we could do this, so that's it, Mr. Mayor. I'll certainly support this.
Thank you, Counselor Riley.
Um, I just wanted to thank everybody for their hard work and for coming together to a resolution. I'm definitely gonna support it. And I just wanted to echo everybody and say congratulations on the Kalia recertification again.
Thank you, Counselor Mangini.
I do also want to thank all the hard work from our staff, and, you know, again, our police department is stellar. We're very fortunate. I'm very proud to be, uh, resident in Enfield with all of the confidence in our officers, and this is long overdue, but I'm glad we finally came to this, uh, resolution. And let's make our officers whole, and let's let them know that we're behind them and all the hard work that they do for us. So thank you. Thank you, Chief, thank you. Um, you know, to our Town Manager, our, our Town Staff Steve, and all who participated in getting this work done. Um, like Carl said, equitably, thank you again.
Thank you, Counselor Kiner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also wanna thank all those involved in, uh, reaching this amicable solution. Uh, we have a wonderful police department. I'm, I'm proud of our department, and, um, again, I'm glad that a solution was reached. And I'll certainly support this.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Suzak.
All set.
Counselor Mueller.
Thank you for all the hard work. Thank you, everyone. I'll be supporting this.
Counselor Ungeyer.
I just wanna thank Mr. Bronson, Chief Fox, Mr. Belinda, um, and everyone that worked together. It's nice to see all the cooperation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hemler.
Um, I wanna thank everybody involved with the agreement. Um, also, congratulations on the Kalia accreditation. And I do wanna give a heartfelt thanks to all the officers for keeping us safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bosco.
Also.
You know, Chris, uh, really, you know, I mean, everyone's spoken so well here, so I don't wanna just say the same thing, but I think it's important for people to understand what we're trying to build here. We're trying to build a professional organization, and that means, you know, sometimes we're not gonna agree on everything. But to your point, I think what, to what Steve Belinda, our Director of Human Resources said earlier, again, we didn't make it personal. We kept talking. Yeah, maybe we didn't always agree, but we kept working, we kept trying to pivot, trying to figure other ways out. And so, you know, the police, to their credit, did the exact same thing. They kept doing their job, they kept being professional, and again, they put the town first. And I just want, again, what I'm very proud of, as the mayor and as a counselor, as part of the, again, it's a professional organization we're trying to build. Every single union from the teachers, all now, and our non-union folks, all the way up to the police, gave us a zero. As we're talking about very difficult economic times, as we're dealing with COVID and everything else, and as we're pulling out of COVID and doing some of the things that we're doing, you know, along with what we're achieving on the farmer's market, it takes a dedicated team to get that done. And so, this really is, and I mean, the, the police deserve all the credit. Officer Haran and his leadership with the union deserves all the credit, so do you, Chief Fox, and of course, Steve Belinda. But again, it's amazing what we can achieve when we just keep talking with each other and don't make it personal. Cuz you know what? Partnerships are formed that way. So again, thank you, Chris, and thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And again, we have a partnership with our police union and with all our unions because they care about the town of Enfield. And so again, I wanna thank this council as well, cuz the council kept their cool and they remain professional. And again, I thank you all. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please, Suzanne.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Hemler.
Four.
Counselor Kiner.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselors Sforza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Counselor Ungeyer.
Four.
Here's ten in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Moving on to item G, under item for discussion, our bond refunding. And I will turn it over to Chris, and if John Wilcox is still on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is another, uh, bit of good news. Several, well, weeks ago, our financial advisors have been watching our portfolio, and with the ever-changing economic events, unfortunately, in some areas, it's been bad. Connecticut, uh, some areas are, are, are experiencing upheaval. Other areas, we've had an influx of new residents, and some of our coffees are filling, uh, more than they did before COVID. I think in the end, it'll, it'll even out, but one of the uh, unfortunate benefits for us at the detriment probably of the overall, uh, stock market uh, is the fact that when the market sort of is going down or is uncertain, people wanna go into bonds. They want to go into municipal and state and federal bonds for security. So we were able to, uh, take advantage of that by, we had to go before Standard and Poor's Global. We issued a press release on Friday. Uh, they have to rerate us and look before we go to the bonds to be able to tell investors, is Enfield still a good bet? Um, so we not only, you know, they reaffirmed, uh, basically our long-term bonds at double A, and also for the short-term bond ranking that, uh, we had enjoyed before, uh, they reaffirmed the highest ranking under Standard and Poor's uh, for the short bonds that we went out. We went out and had the bid. We had anticipated, and the reason we did it is we thought we would hopefully save up to six hundred thousand dollars by going out. Again, these were bonds previously issued over a ten-year period, and we felt we could save quite a bit, uh, if we were to do it, minimum six hundred thousand dollars made sense. So we did that. John and I and Kasha participated, and, uh, we have the results for you this evening. I will also just state, all of these things are interrelated. When we save money in one area, we're able to, uh, you know, do CIP projects in another, we're able to do a roof or some roads, or, uh, you know, settle a police contract. I just wanna be clear, um, the savings here are real. And much like what we, when we went out on the, uh, insurance quote, and I wanna be clear because insurance is a little complicated, maybe I didn't explain it as well as I could've, but when we changed carriers, we saved three hundred thousand dollars. There's no if, ands, or buts. The previous carrier gave us a quote, the new carrier gave us a quote, and we saved three hundred thousand dollars, period. And also, we may save several hundred thousand dollars more because it's a guaranteed quote, so if we have losses during the year, we don't have to pay anything out. So it probably will translate to more than the three hundred thousand, but I want our taxpayers to know that we saved three hundred thousand dollars, period, on the premium. John Wilcox, I'm gonna turn it over to explain. He's very smart and cerebral, but John's gonna tell you in plain English how much we saved over the next, uh, ten years by having gone out and done this, what I term, uh, in a layman's term, uh, this refinancing. John?
Uh, yeah, we, we did very well on these, uh, on this bond issue. Um, it's called a refunding. Um, basically, you sell new bonds at a lower interest rate than, uh, the bonds that you're paying off. You, um, you take that money, you put it into an escrow account, and when the, the bonds are all of the, the bonds that you are replacing become callable, you pay them off using that money out of the escrow account. Um, and then we continue forward paying the, uh, the, the new lower interest rate on those bonds. Um, the total savings in interest was a million, three hundred and seven thousand dollars. Um, we ended up having to, you know, obviously, we had to pay underwriter's discount of about forty-six thousand dollars, probably another twenty to thirty thousand dollars in other, uh, fees for bond council, so we ended up, uh, netting over a million-two on these bonds over the next, you know, the remaining years of it. I, I'd asked them, if you guys remember from, uh, the bond, the presentations with, of the roads and roofs projects, um, we were getting up over, you know, rather high in our, in our projected, um, um, debt service costs. That was in about two thousand twenty-eight through about two thousand thirty. So I applied most of those savings to those years to give us a little bit more flexibility in those years. Um, but still, it's, as Chris said, that's real savings coming in over the, over the remaining term of those bonds. The existing bonds are still outstanding, but we are, there's a, there's a legal term for it. It's called defeasement, which means that the money's set aside and we are no longer liable for those bonds. The, the, um, trustee is, has been, uh, uh, hired to actually take care of paying those bonds when they become callable. So our only now liability is the new, is the new debt that we have. If anybody has any questions, I'd, uh, welcome a chance to talk about it.
Thank you, John. Um, Counselor Sforza, any questions for John or Chris? This is great news.
No, this is fantastic news. We're talking one and a half million dollars, and, uh, I just, the only question I have, John, is, um, when we went back out, was this something that we were scheduled to do, or did the manager direct us to go and see what we could, uh, if we could improve our, our rate?
Actually, this is kind of a, a freak occurrence because according to federal law, um, we cannot issue tax-exempt bonds before the bonds become callable. Uh, what that means is, um, we have to issue taxable bonds, which doesn't do anything different except that the buyer on a taxable bond usually wants a higher interest rate because they have to pay income tax on it. Whereas the tax-exempt bonds that we usually issue are, are left, they don't pay any federal income tax on that. So it, it just, because of actually, uh, you know, the economic conditions around the country right now, uh, we were able to issue, um, tax, taxable bonds, um, at enough, a rate that we could sell, save over a million-three on, uh, on, on the interest on it.
The answer is, the answer is, Carl, as I said, John is very smart. Uh, he gets in the weeds a little bit. I appreciate the compliment in this matter. And Donna Susak knows, our financial advisors are constantly reviewing it. Uh, it was just, it just happened that I, coincidentally, out of my ignorance, asked John if we could go back before Standard and Poor's in an attempt to get our rating increased, even though in the country we were experiencing difficulty. So it sort of was a simultaneous thing, and then, as John said, th- this occurrence did happen, and we went out. So it was a confluence of events. So we do have good financial managers, me, you know me, I'm always looking to save money like we did with Karma, so I think it was just, it overlapped to our, to our advantage.
Uh, it just seems in two weeks or the last two meetings, uh, in your direction, Chris and Urgin, we saved three hundred on our insurance, and now we saved another one-point-two. And I understand there's conditions, but in the end, somebody's driving th- this bus in the right direction, and I think it's you. So congratulations, and I'm very happy with this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Riley.
I'm all set.
Counselor Mangini.
I'm good, thank you.
Counselor Kiner. Counselor Kiner. Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Yeah, no questions, sorry.
No, no problem, sorry. Deputy Mayor Suzak.
I'm all set, but thanks for going back out, and hopefully when we bond for the sore plant, we'll see some good numbers come in then as well.
Counselor Mueller.
No questions, thank you.
Counselor Ungeyer.
I know, nice job. Thank you.
Counselor Hemler.
Uh, good job. Thanks for the savings. We all appreciate it.
Counselor Bosco.
All set, thank you.
Yeah, Chris, I mean, it's, this is good stuff. This is what we talk about when we're managing our budgets as tightly as we can. We're always looking, you know, again, we're not just spending money, we're looking where we can save, and that's why our, knock on wood, our, our stability, again, the key word is our stability, is helping our bond rating, helping our finances, which has allowed us so far to tread very carefully through some very rough waters. So again, it's a tribute to both you and John and, and his entire staff.
Well, I'll say, and I mean this sincerely, it's a tribute to the council, it's a tribute to all of our department heads, and I remind them, we have, as I said, uh, frequent uh, staff meetings, and I just kinda remind them to say, let's, let's run the town, as Joey said earlier, um, similar to a business, but as if it was the, the money that you were running your household, and we try to do that. So whether it's going out, um, you know, to bid on, you know, EMS for collections and saving money there, or sending dunning letters, you know, to out-of, uh, town people or out-of-state people that used our services and aren't paying their bill for EMS, we sometimes may collect five or ten thousand dollars. John collected a lot more when we went out, um, on delinquent motor vehicle, but we treat it like it's our money, and I think our taxpayers expect that and they deserve it. And, you know, sometimes it may be five or ten thousand dollars, and then sometimes, like here, as Carl said, it's three hundred thousand or one-point-two million, but we try to be vigilant, we try to be very good stewards of the town's money, and the council, to their credit, this all started a couple of years ago, Mr. Mayor, when you, you instituted the quarterly meetings on giving budget reports. So we said, we're not gonna wait to budget for the town to just a last, you know, the last couple of months. We try to do it all year long, and again, it, it is, we're reaping rewards and benefits from it. And I can't tell you how important it is to have the support of this council unanimously. The staff sees it, our employees do, and it makes a big difference when people wanna come to work and they wanna do a good job, and they know their bosses appreciate their efforts. So I thank all of you because it's imperative, and without your support, I couldn't do my job, and they really, uh, couldn't do theirs, so thank you.
Well said. Anything else? Hearing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
By Counselor Mangini?
Second.
Second by Counselor Ungeyer, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion adjourned. Thank you, Suzanne. Have a good night, everyone.